This conference will now be recorded.
We will call to order the Marius Select Board May 10th at 6:00 P. M. And Justin Makehook, President Town Hall and Susan Cooper, President Town Hall.
I have a laughing pen, but hopefully I will, you too. I know, there's usually pens in here and then one day I don't bring a pen. So usually I have like pens in my pocket and pen everywhere.
So the first item is reappointment for the Cultural Council Maggie Barkin.
Yep.
So this is a three-year appointment, if I'm not mistaken. So I've moved to appoint Maggie Barkin to the Cultural Council for three years.
I will second.
Any comments on that?
Caller number one. Hi caller.
We'll take a vote.
Yes.
And yes, so that is approved. Thank you Maggie for serving the Cultural Council for another three years. Item number two is the gravel bid. And the recommendation of the town administrator and director of operations is to accept Tryon. Tryon's gravel bid, which.
I have it here for you to sign. None to your side of the cut.
Do you have any questions on that?
No, I just, I'm just gonna say we didn't have any other bid.
You did, you had John Isling.
And how did it compare? Uh, it did not.
Yeah, they only offered per ton.
I think we had to pick it up or.
Someone.
Yeah, they only did per ton picked up.
And they didn't.
It was seventeen ninety for the first one. They didn't do the six inch. And the three quarters was seventeen ninety a ton as well.
Okay.
Yes, so. They didn't even offer one of the requested grapples out of only three.
Right.
So that's kind of tough.
There you go.
And they didn't offer delivered. So I would move to accept the gravel bid from Tryon Construction.
I will second. Do we typically pick up or get delivered?
Um, it's probably have to happen now depending what the project is. Now that he has those bigger trucks, they can.
I just, it was a completely, it hadn't come up before, so I.
Well, also, we probably pick up, you know, kind of even with delivered now because pickup is not very far away.
Right.
If we have to.
If we had involved, it would go a lot further, yeah.
Then we're really in a pinch, so. Are there any other comments on the gravel bid before we vote? Okay, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
And yes, so the Tryon gravel, Tryon Construction gravel bid is accepted. The next item is the hauling bid.
Susan just caught an error in the calculation.
What's that?
The numbers that I sent you there, the rentals we did for a month instead of a year. So it actually is a fourteen thousand dollar difference. Ten, ten from like a year, but I think I'm confident that we would still recommend. It was based on the fact that we can't accept Casella because it's a conditional bid.
I'm also worried about the fuel surcharge.
Fuel surcharge and the issues that Jim has had. Last, I'm assuming the thing has been picked up now, but he called more than four times to get bottles and cans. Been picked up and no one called him then. Did I think he left in the middle of the road, I guess, and brought on their dump trucks up there?
I mean, it's been a consistent problem on and off for the whole duration of the contract, so.
So. Yeah, that's tough.
So the issue that we're trying, it would, Susan, I want you to have a meeting tonight is because if you do accept our recommendation of projects, he needs to order the bins so we can try to get this all switched out, which is very good.
Right.
Isn't that good, right?
Yeah.
So it's definitely more, the flip side is that we have had consistent problems with Casella. And they're not, and they're not even even considering offering us prices for them to use. And mind you, it's sort of makes sure that even though, I mean, if Roger offers us these prices, they can still opt out of the contract.
Yes, when I talked to the state, he said we shouldn't take that because of the asterisk above it. And it says up to a ten percent increase in years two and three. Up to is not a definitive number, so we could be thinking it's three percent, whereas he could be thinking it's seven percent.
Right, right, okay.
Um, so. Check it for year one because.
We have to mute the caller because of background noise.
This conference will now be recorded.
So Rogers, did the asterisk disposal may increase each year up to ten percent, ten percent?
Right, just for years two and three.
Which.
But they gave us numbers, but they're not definitive.
The numbers for year one are.
Yeah.
And actually, we're only accepting for year one because it's a, it's a. It's a contract for one year with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods.
The thing is, it's optional on both parts, right?
Both parts. Which is why Casella didn't take it this last year.
Right, so it's really kind of a moot thing anyway because they can just opt out.
Right.
So there's no, it's kind of.
So this, yeah, this is tricky. I mean, I was willing more so to have the five thousand more to go with Roger. Assuming that there was no fuel surcharge, that may save us money, assuming, assuming that there was no contingency. But if the difference is more like fourteen thousand.
Obviously, that's estimated.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
So it could be less or more.
It could be, and especially if we make some changes up there, you know.
It would be really good to get people to be making less trash, but I don't, only ten, I don't know how convinced I am that we can get people to do it. My other issue is that they have been, we have had a lot of problems with them over the course of the year. It got a little better, I thought, for a while, but now it sounds like maybe not.
With the dump things?
No, with people, with the pickups, with them actually coming with Jim and.
Yeah, no, that's gotten, it got a little better for a couple of months there and.
It was going back down now. It's going back down. I think they're, I mean, they're high consensus second problem. That seems to be the root of it.
Right.
Um, and.
Sorry, yeah.
They just don't, they sometimes don't come, sometimes for quite a while. In a couple of cases, they came while we were open and there's no bid. While we're hauling.
Right.
I mean, like, there's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, but they come Wednesday while it's open.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I would guess I'd like another week to think about if that's possible. I know that, I know why we want to move on in a timely manner, but I didn't. Now with this cost difference, I know the, the ser, that would also put us above budget estimate.
I know, estimated. We do, I do have options for using some of the RDP funds for recycling stuff that would offset that a little bit. If you don't accept the recommendation of Rogers, we're gonna have to put it back out to bid because we can't accept Casella's with the conditional pass-through.
Where's, where's, uh, sorry.
So I'm here.
With the conditional pass-through.
Put it in the package that I left you there tonight. They, they have a pass-through charges. These may be further adjusted upon thirty days' notice to cover increases in disposal and processing due to uncontrollable circumstances.
So basically, they can just type things up whenever they want.
If, if something changes. With thirty days' notice.
That more or less means they are not bound to the contract as far as I can see.
Right.
Where's the?
Sorry.
Peace.
It should have been in the back. Just the one I left.
I have the references. That's the gravel.
Oh, did I give you two? I don't know, did I give you two? Sorry.
Well, I have the Casella bid, but it ends with the references.
Okay.
And they.
It's right. It's on the second slide.
Are we likely to get, we're not likely to get anybody else to bid on this, are we?
I'm not sure if you have Rogers. This will be our third time.
Okay, yeah.
So I can get it.
That's fine.
I have it on my own.
Probably on my chest.
I found, I found it in mine.
That's yours, but now I, he should give you mine. So one of these is mine.
This is.
That's Rogers, so that's mine.
Gravel, those are the ground, right? Yeah, uh, I don't know. I need to think. It's a little bit different.
I mean, I did put that in our original recommendations about the bid contingency there that they had.
Yeah, no, and that's, that's. So why would they pass through charges? So this was submitted with their bid package.
Their bid package.
Well, the word, what do we have a? She'll be used required for all contracts. Fuel, so there's the fuel increase and then CPI.
With CPI, ten for consumer first index.
Okay.
But is it just for the fuel?
Well, the first paragraph says to cover increases in disposal and processing or due to uncontrolled circumstances.
The pass-through charge.
Right.
So there's two things. There's the fuel surcharge plus there's the pass-through charge. So basically, this is when fees go up for them, they get to pass it on to us. But it's impossible for us to calculate our cost based on that, right?
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd like another week and then I don't. To figure out. Would, would it, would it be in the numbers?
No, Tom, it's if we run into. I mean, how long would it take them to get the bin?
Well, as I just said to you beforehand, um. We already, Jim reached out to Rogers letting him know that we were recommending, but it was still contingent upon you guys accepting it. Um, and he put in the order because it could be close.
What's the timeline for, like, is there a date by which we have to accept it? In terms of, is there a clock ticking, right, based on when we got the bids?
There's a clock ticking that the Casella's ends on June 30th.
Okay.
So if.
The current, the current contract.
The current, right, right, so if we don't.
And what's the bid time?
Uh, two weeks. Today's the tenth. If you wait till next week, it's gonna take me. Day two to get it out there. Opening's probably the first full week of June.
Okay, so wait, explain to me why we have to re-put it out because we really don't have to. We really don't have one because we can't accept the Casella bid because of the pass-through charge.
So if you don't think you're going to accept it, it's better to tell me now so I can get it out again.
Okay, I'm just thinking through this. If we can't accept the Casella bid because of the pass-through charge, there's no way they're gonna resubmit a bid without that.
It's not just the pass-through charge. They also did not fill out the bid as was instructed. They had to put, they had to put numbers in each of the boxes. It says you either had to put a zero, a number, or N A in each of the boxes, and they left two and three blank.
Two and. Because mine all see.
What?
There's two and three.
They had to blank, okay.
Or, right, I see what you're saying. Um, but even so, I can't, it, it seems unlikely to me that they're going to give us something substantially different than this. They're either gonna, they're just gonna put N A in there.
Right.
They're just gonna give us the same thing with N A.
They could, but they said that we were deprived of the option for multiple years by them not filling out the bid correctly. So they have two strikes against them that we can't accept that.
But if Sheffield uses Casella and recommends Casella. Is this also in their contract with Casella, the pass-through, pass-through?
I'm worried about it is.
Well, it all depends. So Egremont uses Casella, but they're in a three-year contract, so they are still in.
Oh, because they had a three-year contract.
So they don't have that letter. So it depends on where Sheffield is, if they had a one-year or a three-year contract.
Why, so if we could have had a three-year, why didn't we just have a three-year instead of a renewal? Potentially always did one with an option to renew.
God. But Valley never had a problem renewing with us.
Right, right, right.
Sheffield says that they had a contract with Casella since twenty twenty, so that.
Twenty twenty.
That could just mean they've been a customer of them since.
Right.
They said they've had a contract with Casella since.
Right, I mean, but we've got a contract with Valley since.
Yeah.
The thing is, I, can I see the letter?
You do.
Oh, are there concerns other than the money that you have, Justin?
Well, it's over budget.
It is, but I don't think we're gonna have an issue with that. So they've been happy with the service. You know what, I.
And Casella's just a lot cheaper and I know that there's that contingency in there and I know that there's a fuel surcharge, but it'd be nice, I guess, to spend a little bit more time and work out what reasonably that might amount to and. I guess also if we do end up going with Casella, then they don't, they don't have that turnaround on the on the containers because we're already using their containers, right?
Right, again, we can't go with Casella, we have to put it out to bid again. We can't accept this bid because of the terms of the bid.
Yeah, I just hate this standard. They'd have to renew it. And the other issue is, what we might then get is a bid from Casella, but not a bid from Rogers since they, this would be the second time they bid on something and they didn't, we didn't accept it. So we might end up with not even having an option. Just we'd have, we'd have to go with Casella.
Well, and I'll just point out, if they bid again and we keep our bid package as it is and they put a pass-through charge in there again, we still can't accept it because they're putting a conditional item in there.
So even if they filled in N A for the other.
Right, the conditional bid.
How did, so maybe you're.
Because the price is subject to change as our bid did not allow for changes. So we would have to allow for changes in our bid, which would mean we really couldn't budget on this at all.
How is Sheffield doing that? Because I'm, unless they had a consistent contract that was a three-year contract that they're gonna, gonna run out. Sheffield would be subject to the same issue.
But they've, they're an enterprise fund. I don't know if that plays any difference. I guess they could raise our fees midway through the year.
I'd also, I, I mean, I haven't talked, what's the name of the TA in Sheffield?
I don't know.
I'm just wondering if it's, we're talking to Renee to see if they, she's saying they're happy with the service, but people have different ideas of what consists as happy. So I'd be curious to talk to Renee and see if she's happy with the service. Because I, I don't, I think we've been happy with the service. Um, but people's expectations are different. Who's, who's Roger been servicing to, you know?
Uh, he's, he just, Namabro, he's doing them. His, his references were Alford and.
I don't know.
I don't know, I think I can hear, uh, right, just says Town Hall for a time by Washington and Towner tomorrow. Um.
Sheffield then.
I'm in New Orleans, Berkshire Solid Waste Management, just in, is that Adams?
Uh, do you want me to get Jim to call in? Do you have any questions for him?
No, I mean, I think it's just gonna take a week because of the numbers and because of the, with Casella being that much cheaper. I just, I, I had thought it was like a four thousand dollars and.
I did too, I think.
Yeah.
And, and I knew, okay, so if it's four thousand more, but there's no contingency and there's no fuel surcharge and there's options for years two and three, let's go with that, but with fourteen, it's a little bit of a different.
Yeah, I hear you.
It's a little bit of a different question, and I just want some time to think. Think about it and, and figure out. And we could also have another.
Yeah.
Person here.
Me too. I wish, and it's so, like, the fuel contingency and the other surcharges, they're so hard. You just don't know what's gonna happen and not just what's gonna happen to fuel prices or tip fees. You don't know how the other companies can handle those things, right? Like, I mean, they're, they're probably, with the fuel surcharge, it's probably based on some. What, is it based on a CPI index or something?
Yes.
Yeah, so they don't just make it up themselves.
Right.
But the tip fee thing, I.
So. I guess we'll come back, we'll, we'll come back to this next week and if we go with Roger next week, then that's that. And then if we go with, or if we don't go with Roger next week, then we have to figure out to put it out to bid, to put it back out to bid. But I'm not in a, I'm not in a place where I feel like I absolutely wouldn't accept Roger, so I wouldn't say that had that rough. Right now, I just feel like it was coming in an estimated fourteen thousand dollar, that maybe much more careful consideration.
So here's my concern, and I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just, we're here, so I'm talking about it. If we, if we're not allowed to accept the bid with a pass-through charge and Casella is unlikely to offer us a contract without that. What option does that leave us?
I don't know, but I don't know that they wouldn't offer without, and then I'm interested in how other towns like Sheffield, does Sheffield not have a pass-through charge or how does that work?
That's something that can, that's something we can find out, right, by talking to.
Yeah, I'm, like I said, it depends. The only thing that's gonna matter is if they're, if they're in San Diego, it's Egremont, if they're in a three-year contract, they have that.
Well, if they had, if they had, if they actually had a three-year contract, they don't have that.
But I'll monitor tomorrow.
But finding out because that could make a big difference. If they do have that, how do they get away with it, you know? But I'm just worried, like, you know, we, I think Roger probably doesn't want to, but can wait a week, but the bottom line is if we put it back out to bid, if Roger's like, well, you know, I'm not gonna bid again because you've already bid twice and you guys didn't accept it and Casella's like, we're not offering you a bid without the pass-through charge, then we've got nothing. That would be very bad. So I would not like to be in that, not that I like being held over the fire. But it's not like we had three hundred bids, right?
And we tried, I put it out to Barbados and they said they, they weren't interested in USA Waste and there was no response from them.
Yeah, so, but this doesn't put it, we're not putting it back out to bid today, so we just have another week to think on it.
Right.
And figure it out, and, and we're not just putting it back out to bid, so we're not in that situation.
Egremont was offered, Egremont offered and Egremont has, well, has Casella, Alford has Casella.
Alford has Roger.
Roger.
Namabro and Malwachington.
Right, so, but it's worth finding out with Egremont and Sheffield both that they have the pass-through.
I know Egremont doesn't because they're in year two of the contract.
They're in year, so they had.
They're in year two of the contract that they had with Valley.
Right.
A three-year contract, so they couldn't.
So I'm willing to ban Sheffield's in the same situation.
But they, but they've been in since twenty twenty.
Yeah, but I think, I think you might be reading that different. I could be wrong, but like, if, if you were to ask me how long we had a contract with Valley for, I would say, you know, since two thousand. Because it was a contract that we, we kept with them since two thousand. We kept renewing it, but we've had a contract with them since two thousand.
Yeah.
Right now, if I have that right.
I mean, I just be, I just curious to see what Sheffield does.
Yeah. Because if they're, if they don't have the pass-through fee, it's not.
And, and just, the other thing is, is we don't have to put hauling out to bid. Okay, it's not one of the ones under procurement that we have to do. Monterey has always done it so that we could get a competitive rate. So that could be the other thing with Sheffield, maybe they don't put it out to bid.
And then just, right. Because you only have, you're only caught by the pass-through charge if you do put it out to bid. If you don't.
Right, because it wasn't in our bid package. We didn't allow for changes.
Gotcha, gotcha. Um, okay. I think it's also worth actually talking to Rhonda to see, like, we've been happy with their service, but I'd like to know if they're actually having the same problems we have. Like, are they having problems getting them to come pick it up? Are they picking it up in, you know, inappropriate times? Are they just failing to show off?
Is that letter dated recently?
But who knows why she said it, right? Sometimes people won't put it in writing.
May one twenty-three.
So you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know.
Like, sometimes there are issues, but nobody wants to say it in writing, which, again. But it's worth actually having a better picture. Um, if we're taking the time to do it anyway.
So we, we'll come back to that next week with some more information.
We don't have to put it out to bid even though it's so much. It's one of those things, just like insurance, you don't have to put it out to bid.
Okay.
But if we're gonna get, but if you're gonna get a contracting to put out to bid?
No, we don't have to put it out to bid.
You would just get a contract, okay. Um, for unanticipated business, the only question I would have was, as you were talking right before the meeting. If now we're paying the retiree benefits out of free cash, just, we're just building up the retiree stabilization fund more and, but there's nothing else we need to do there, okay?
I have two questions. I don't know if you'll answer them, maybe because I remember not being here, but if your meeting schedule is gonna stay the same or you're gonna try to go to less meetings, and I, I will need to know by next week what your last meeting is going to be before July fifteenth because we have to send up the calendar to send out to everybody to let them know when internal transfers have to be made, when they have to get all the paperwork in, when they have to do encumbrances, and it's all contingent on your last meeting, so.
So we will put on the agenda for next week, meeting schedule, regular meeting schedule.
Because the way this falls, we almost, this almost has to be the last day and it really stinks because that's July fourth and.
Right.
Well, that's going on in the, the week of the twelfth, Eric.
Uh, yeah, Eric said that it won't work because of, I believe, our warrants are this week and everything has to be signed and the checks done before the fifteenth. So I believe this is gonna have to be the date because our next warrant is here.
Okay, this is a wacky thing to say, but like, we are not forced to have, but we need one Wednesday. What if we put on the seven?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, you're right.
I'm like, I should have been saying, like, we could break out of the mold and be crazy and our Friday meeting, oh my god.
We can, we can meet whatever day.
Right, like, that, because that would solve their job. No, I know.
I get it in my head, but you're right.
But not just you, like, we do the same thing.
Oh, we do, yeah, I'll meet you personally, I like.
But we actually can.
Yeah, we can, we can meet wherever we want.
And then one other thing for you guys to consider, Sophie and I are working on setting up a training for harassment and stuff for everybody. I'd like to make it the all-boards meeting. Um, but the trainers that we can get can only come, they're gonna do two sessions, one from ten-thirty to twelve and one from one-thirty. So I don't know if you guys are okay with making an all-boards meeting during the day.
What, uh, what day, do we know?
I don't know yet.
Okay, uh, because we just, the sound.
It's gonna be in August sometime, but.
Okay.
So everybody would have plenty of notice, but you guys can think about it for next week.
Um, is it for boards or for staff too?
Yes, so what we're thinking, because if, if we made it all boards and everything, we'd like everybody to do it. As I said, we'd split them up, whoever, which one, where any employees would most likely come during the day and.
Right.
Yeah, she thinks that, you know, boards and committees, because they do deal with the employees there.
I, I get it. I'm, I'm not saying we shouldn't train both. I was just wondering if we're gonna mix them or not mix them. I, and I don't really have a problem either way, as long as people can schedule for that. I have no idea how many board members would attend because some of them do work and some of them don't. But all we can do is, you know, we, we're never gonna be able to accommodate everything. It doesn't matter what time you pay. You're guaranteed there will be people who can't do it, so better to do it than not do it. If it's a large number of people that can, then we have to figure out we need to do it again. Unless you have a better idea.
I think about it for next week, I just wanted to know that.
No, it's a good thing to think about. Does Sophie have anything else she wants to? Okay.
Or are there any, um, if there's no more unanticipated business, are there comments and questions for the public? I think so. Are we gonna do the next?
Yep, I'll find that. It's gonna be here on the day.
Oh, pink and blue, you can actually tell in the corner. I tried to approve, like, the things that were obvious. It should say had not officially.
Had.
But had not officially voted, but not officially. Uh, agreed on this in principle, as well as the sick pay policy, but had not officially gone on the wording, and this is in the budget, however, there was not a corner vote on the side of it.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Then we just need the word choice between may not allow enough time for. Adequate discussion.
And what would this be? What would the, your version be, how would it read?
Just the, the word may not allow enough time for adequate or thorough discussion.
Oh, I don't care, pick one. That is the same thing.
And then the next thing is non-money or significant. Significant non-money items, we'll just swap those two if that works.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, it, maybe that there's, there often are some money items on this special town warrant, but. They're usually, it's usually less weighty, except for, you know, giant suits. Do we, we don't, to, to, if, even if we wanted, just on that topic.
Mm-hmm.
If we wanna do that, we don't even have to officially put it on a, make a bylaw to do it, we could just decide, announce that we're gonna hold that meeting and we're planning to do it every year.
Yes, I mean, as long as the slot board said we're gonna do it the first Saturday of November at nine-thirty, they stuck to that, they could.
Yeah.
But.
Plan on it, people.
It doesn't, I mean, that only works as much as boards stick to it, which.
Of course, we can put it in the bylaw and then people can choose to have it or not have it, I mean, I don't.
First, if you put it in the bylaw, like that law, you end with, you needed to have one in October.
Well, you can always have them whenever.
But then would you have to have one in November?
I don't know, I mean, I think they'd be written in such a way that if you're, you would hold one in November.
But if we give them flexibility, then it's up to the board's discretion anyway.
Yeah.
That's the reality, right? Well, that was easy.
Um, motion to approve the four twenty-six, twenty-three minutes as amended.
Second.
All but yes.
Yes.
So those are approved.
Anyway.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
We're meeting next week, correct?
We're meeting next week, the, I, a couple of the items that I have for the agenda are regular meeting schedule. The, cause, the hauling bid and, like, discuss goals and priorities.
Regular meeting schedule and also schedule of finalizing the.
July.
July, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if you give me a regular meeting schedule, I'll be able to figure out what your date will be.
True, although if we make a regular meeting schedule and we feel like we need to meet, I mean, and have a regular meeting schedule and still have a special meeting that Friday, because we know we need to, right? We're not.
I think we could meet on Saturday, I mean, we, I think we can meet on. With proper.
Right.
Um, but other than that, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yeah, all but yes.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at six-thirty-four.